Order the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Human Services Committee. Clerk would take the role, please.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Tamian. Commissioner Heidemann. Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Greatop.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best of liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
Take a motion to accept the agenda.
Support.
Anybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Any citizens wishing to address Human Services? Any updates from Commissioners?
I'm going to give a quick update. This is for our people in the audience. Next Thursday, we're having our meeting at the St. Clair Boat Harbor. And after the meeting, since everybody here works for the county, we're going to be having a big shrimp cookout. We've done it in years past. They're the same ones that do the Elginak Lions Club. You're more than welcome to come down, bring your significant others. That will be right after the meeting. So, some pretty good eating. Six o'clock next Thursday at the St. Clair Boat Harbor. We're going to be in one of the pavilions right there. So, love to have you.
That's certainly a Human Service item.
I want to tell them before they leave after they're done presenting. So, it's a lot easier to invite you now.
Well, that one could fit, that could fit almost any of the committees, I think. You could, you could make it fit any one of them.
He's going to say it again at mine.
Carrie, conceptual initiatives?
None this evening.
Nothing, no old business. New business, 7A, the resolution adopting the AAA 1B.
Make a motion to send the resolution 17-14 approving the AAA 1B fiscal year 2018 information plan to the full board.
Support. Any discussion? Anything you want to add in, Carrie? A change at the, at the top of this thing in any way?
No.
Okay.
Could I ask you one question, Carrie?
Sure.
Commissioner Rushing?
I have.
You have the floor.
How's that compare with last year?
Um, well, someone was supposed to be here this evening to present this to you. I don't actually have those figures with me right now.
Nothing more, but I see all the counties included.
All right. No more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Any other Human Service matters? Information only. We have the St. Clair County Health Department June points of interest.
Make motion to file.
Receive and file.
Support.
Motion to support, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Passes two, nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
First you have to receive and file all packets.
Okay. So moved.
Support.
Discussion, motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass. Now you can do it.
I'll motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need adjourned.
Could have made you halfway though.
Thank you, Chairman. Are you settled?
Yes, sir. I'm ready. Wait a minute. Okay, now.
We'll call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary and Public Safety Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tamian. Commissioner Heidemann. Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greatop.
Here.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
We have motion and support to accept as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none? Updates? None conceptual initiatives?
None.
We have none. No old business, under new business. Amendment of the Michigan Public Safety Communication System?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to move this to full board.
Support.
Motion and support. Is there any questions? Yes.
I just, uh, just wanted to talk a little bit about it for just a second. I, I was confused by some of the numbers in here. There's a pretty large number in there and a very small fee, like $250 one-time charge. And so I had a long talk with Tim Conger today about it, trying to get it straight. We're probably going to end up sending back about $900,000 because we're not going to be able to use it when 2020 rolls around. We just, the, the radio activation fees, which are one-time, used to be like a monthly or a yearly charge and some of the pager stuff, but it's all one-time charges and only if you get a new group or a new this or a new that. And it's with 1.3 out there now, it's probably 9.23 is going to get sent back sometime. So I'm just, I wish there was a way we could divert it, but we can't.
But it, there's, it's such a limited use of the funds.
Exactly.
Right.
Parameters are very, very tight on this one. So, just wanted to share that with, with the Commissioners.
Thank you. Any other questions? Motion to support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. Motion carries. Item B, the 2017 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program application. This is for final action.
I would move that 2017 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program application for final action with a 50% match by the sheriff and that being paid out of their respective budgets.
Support.
We have motion and support. Are there any other questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bohm.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes. Item 7C, the Crime Victims' Right Grant Application for 2018.
Make a motion, we forward this to the full board.
Support.
We have motion and support. Are there any questions? Pretty cut and dry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other judiciary public safety matters? Seeing none? Information only, the St. Clair County E-911 Technical Surcharge Pool Financial Statements? Joe? Yes, sir?
I just had a quick question on that. And I, I don't know if there's somebody here that can answer this or not, or if Carrie would know it. I'm on page 38 of the 42 pages where they're listing assets 2016, 2015. 2015 had $13,266 in the amount due from common funds and 2016 was only 5,200.
Land lanes.
Big discrepancy, it's a big number there. Just wondered why.
Uh, my guess is it's just a timing issue on their collections from the various service providers that collect the 911 fees.
That number would probably balance out just depending on where and when they collected them.
Correct. Yep. Just the timing of when the providers remitted the funds over to this pool.
Thank you. That's all I had.
All right.
I guess, just one quick comment while we're on the 911 stuff. I know the pagers have had a little bit of issues down in Marine City and I talked to Tim Conger and they're working through that. There's a couple areas. That Marine City thing, and Bill, you drive through there all the time, that whole waterway and I drive the, I drive the water communities from Marine City to Port here and every day, twice a day. And you get in a stretch, this, you just, you can't, it's bad, you know? And I don't know if, you know, I don't necessarily know that's a county issue, it's just how, that Canadian thing down there, it's just...
I believe in all honesty that Verizon, and I've got, I've got somebody in Lansing working on getting me the name of somebody that we can talk to because I'm tired of talking to them as a citizen who's complaining or as a customer that's complaining. I want to talk to them as a county commissioner or, or as a state rep or something to find out what's going on. I think they've cut their power again in that area there. It's, the service is absolutely horrendous in that area now.
You might want to reach out to Phil on that too because I had talked to him one other time.
He, I already did.
Good.
He's, he's working on it.
Okay, good.
He's got his guy on it, so.
I'll make a motion to receive and file. Information only.
Support.
Motion to support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn? Motion to receive and file packets?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Do we have support?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chairman Dunn.
Thank you, sir.
Call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Works Committee of 2000, July 6, 2017 to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Tamian. Commissioner Heidemann. Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greatop.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Item number two, additions, deletions, changes, seeing none? Accept a motion?
Have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Citizens to be heard. Any citizens to be heard this evening? Updates?
Nope.
Seeing none? Conceptual initiatives? Seeing none? Old business, none? New business? Item 7A, landfill letter of credit? Mr. Chairman, I move that we send this on to the full board.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item B, Woodsong Canoe and Kayak Launch Purchase?
Make a motion, we forward this to the full board.
Support. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 7C, Fort Grashit Construction Engineering Services? Motion that we send this on to the full board? Support. Questions?
I got a couple for Mark here.
All right.
If you don't mind.
Mark, please.
Just a couple basics. I haven't been up there yet this summer. I'm assuming the high waters causing a little bit of erosion issues up there.
Yes. We've lost probably at least between 50 and 60 feet of depth of beach. It's gone.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, how much, Mark?
Hmm?
How much have you lost?
About 50, 60 feet. And that's pretty consistent down, down the whole shoreline.
Couple people live up there and they were water, you know, they're waterfront properties now.
No beachfront anymore.
Yeah.
You dive in now. Okay.
Any other questions?
Basic stuff, I know.
Yeah. Mr. Greatop? This, um, now, you had storm damage last year at that beach and lost it. Has that, was that repaired?
No, because we submitted an application to the Corps of Engineers and it took a year to get a permit back.
Okay, so we're really fighting two things. We had the storm damage and now we've got the high water.
Well, yeah, those in concert caused, caused most of the loss of the sand. So, this step of the process is now that we have the permit is to finish the engineered drawings and bid it out for, um, work this fall to stabilize the soil. And all the work is above the ordinary high watermark. We're not going to do anything below the ordinary high watermark.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Have you ever done anything like this on the pass of beaches?
No, we had, you know, we, prior to this, we had a maintenance permit in Wood, because we inherited a property that had had historically a lot of concrete rubble dumped on the property to extend the beach out. We had to permit to deal with the safety issues and remove the concrete as it became a problem. And so, for the life of that permit, we've been taking out rebar and dangerous concrete. But now that, that, that permit laps and it was at the same time we needed to get some construction approved on the beach. So, we did it at the same time.
Yeah, one of the things we're pushing all-time high zone on the water levels and we didn't own that park back, you know, all-time highs.
Yeah.
87, 88 kind of stuff. I mean, we acquired that par, park 10 years ago, somewhere in there, however long ago. So, now it's, you know, these things are up and issues everywhere, southern part of the county. I was just talking to Commissioner Greatop down there with, you know, high waters and that kind of stuff. And not a whole lot you can do about Mother Nature, you know?
Deal with it. Any other questions? Thank you, Mark. Did I?
He's had a motion and support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item eight, Smiths Creek Landfill Activities Report?
Need a motion to receive and file?
No, there's not.
No, I haven't.
Submit everything.
Okay. Uh, number 10, Park Monthly Financial Documents?
Make the motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 11, receive and file?
Make motion to receive and file.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Number 12, adjournment. Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At this time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioners Tamian. Commissioner Heidemann. Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Greatop.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Okay, number two, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda. I see none. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. This time, do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Any citizens? Seeing none. We'll move to updates. We have presentation, an audit presentation. Do it, please, Paul.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Paul Bailey. I'm the principal in charge of your financial audit. Um, as you know, you contract with our firm each year to do a financial audit of the county's accounting records. Uh, I think each of you received a copy of the full audit report tonight. Uh, it's 150 pages plus. Uh, also, I think in your agenda, you received kind of our summary that we hand out each year. I'm going to kind of go through a couple things in that, not everything. I know you have other things on your agenda. Uh, I guess, before we get started talking about numbers and everything, everything went very well during your audit. We work with your administration and planning when we're going to come down. We spend about four weeks down here doing your audit, going to the various departments, checking on their control systems and so forth. Um, and again, I'm happy to report we did not note any material weaknesses in your systems. Uh, and we'll just kind of go through some items. If you turn in on that presentation, I actually have a hard copy. If anybody wants hard copies too. Um, but I think it's, each one of you got them electronically if I recall correctly. Um, the second, first page of that audit presentation, one of the first things in your audit report is something called the Independent Auditor's Report. Um, and as usual, you'll have what they call an unmodified or clean opinion. Uh, that's what all governmental units are striving for. When the Michigan Department of Treasury gets it, that's what they're looking for. Uh, and that's the best type of an opinion that you can receive. Roman numeral two there, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Um, as you are aware, you received your award for 2015. Uh, each year you submit your audit report to what they call the Governmental Finance Officers Association. And they go through it with a very fine-tooth comb, looking for, reading every word of it, tracing back and forth. Um, and then about, what, November or December, they will notify the county on whether you received it. You submitted your 2016 report. We have no reason to believe that you will not receive it again. We fully expect you'll receive notification sometime in the fall on the 2016. Number, Roman numeral three and four, we're not going to talk much about. They're just items in that audit report. We just kind of highlight on that presentation. If you go on, go down to number five, it's your balance sheet for your general fund. Uh, you'll see as of December 31, 2016, your general fund had assets of $18,631,496. You had liabilities of $6,453,235. What they call deferred outflows, it's, they're similar to a liability of $104,652, which left a fund balance as of December 31, 2016 of $12,316,06. And you can see the 15 numbers right next to it there. Um, your fund balance is up about three, about 300,000, just under 300. And we'll talk more about that when we turn the page. If you turn to the page to the top of the next page, the next statement in there is called, something called the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes on Fund Balance or your operating statement. For the year, your general fund took in $55,370,000. You spent $49,846,000. You had what they call other financing uses, basically transfers to other funds of 5.3 million. So, for the year ended December 31, your general fund, as you budgeted, was to the good $236,98. So, you were positive $236,98. In the financial report, there's two other funds that you budget separately that's combined just because of accounting standards. When you put that all together, you're $292,970 there. We also give, number three there, give you a five-year analysis of your fund balance. Um, there and you can see, again, you totally had 12 million dollars of the fund balance. Uh, there's a portion that's what's called non-spendable, $5,800,000. And most of that is advances to your drain commission to do drain projects so they don't have to go out and bond. It saves a lot of cost on them. Committed fund balance, if you look down below, that's that budget incentive fund that you have $1,437,633 in there. And then finally, the assigned fund balances for your development revolving fund, there was $551,000. And that left your undesignated fund balance in your general fund of $4,241,910. Now, just briefly, we always give you some graphs. Um, if you turn to page seven, you'll see, uh, the first, page seven is what the, is your general fund revenues by source. And a little over 50% of your revenues come from taxes in your general fund, about 52.2% this year. That compared to about 54.3 in the prior years. And you can see all the other pies stay pretty well consistent from year to year. A little over 50 cents on every dollar in your general fund comes from tax revenues. The next largest portion is intergovernmental revenues, which is state shared revenues and other grants. The next grant, uh, graph is page eight. Uh, just basically also breaks your expenditures down by major category. Um, your largest expenditure of your general fund, as you're well aware, is for public safety, about 40 cents of every dollar is spent on public safety. And then you can see general government, which includes a lot of different things, is 20%. And you can see each of the piece. One thing I caution is, you know, when one piece of the pie changes, it changes every other piece in there. So, you got, you got to really look at the gross numbers sometimes also. But they stay pretty consistent from year to year. Page nine, just shows you a 10-year history of your general fund fund balance. And you can see it has steadily grown since 2007, which I commend you on controlling your budget. A lot of governmental units cannot do that. Uh, you do a very good job of forecasting and controlling your budget. And as you can see by this bar graph, again, it's just up around $10 million there. The final graph there is on page 10. It just shows your revenues and expenditures. Um, and as you can see, um, back in 2008, they were at the high point. Um, they dipped to the low point in 2014. It went up for, in 2015 and 2016, but nowhere near what your revenues and expenditures were back in 2008. The rest of that presentation takes every one of your funds and gives you the revenues and expenditures as well as a fund balance. I'm not going to read through them for you tonight. Um, they're there just so you can peruse. It's, it's a kind of a summary of that 150-page document there. Uh, just trying to give you a very summarized, um, overall picture of the, of the county's, each of their funds. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Commissioner Greatop.
Paul, um, when you're looking to do 15, 20% fund balance based on your budget, do we use all of the money that we have in there, the full 12? Can we use the part that's, that we, you know?
You know, in a way you can't.
Non-spendable part?
In a way you can't, just because it's going to come back over a number of years. So, really, it's not available to spend in the short term. So, I would look at more than just the undesigned card degree. It, it depends on how you're looking at it, really. Um, different agencies can have a different idea.
Do you have any other questions?
No, just a comment. You know, being on the board for 13 years and serving in the worst economic downturn since the Depression, we've, uh, weathered the storm, you know, fairly well, all things considered, so.
Absolutely.
You know, kudos to administration, you know, and everything over the years for keeping us on pace. But I know we got a little bit of growth, not a ton, still, I talked to Greg Hill, a couple percent maybe.
Yeah, about 2%.
Yeah, so. But, um, yeah, starting to see some stuff. Duke, I know you're in the construction world.
It's crazy.
Yeah. Seen a lot of stuff.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Lot better than it was six years ago.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Yes. Is this Danielle's first audit with her being in charge or was it you?
Uh, no, Danielle worked and Deana in our, our accounting office did the majority of the audit. Um, she's certainly always played a pretty critical role in the audit in the past as well.
Well, you'd think we ought to give kudos out to Danielle, that nice job. Thank you.
And the whole thing, I only found one error, so hers I found three.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
All right, thank you, Paul.
Pleasure to work with you.
All right, thank you, Paul.
Do we need a motion? Or is that just presentation? Okay. All right, we'll move on to conceptual initiatives. Do you have any? Seeing none, move on to old business. None, new business. 7A, Board of Commissioners Meeting Schedule Revision. This is for final action.
So moved. Support?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, IT Manning Table Change.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to move this to the full board. Support.
Any questions? Fairly self-explanatory, so. No questions? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?[1549.94] Aye, any opposed, motion passed. Seven C, resolution seventeen fifteen approving the submission of a deficit elimination plan, and this is for final action. I have a motion.
So moved.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? Uh, do we need a roll call on this, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion passed. Moving on to two thousand seventeen budget adjustments. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion, we send this on to the full board?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passed. Seven E, Blue Water Convention Center bank account request. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions? I have one. I didn't see a cost for this, what's the cost?
There, there's no cost to set up a new bank account, it's just a clearing account for a ATM machine.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion passed. Okay, moving on to eight, other ways and means matters, do we have any?
One thing I forgot to address earlier, um, July eighteenth, myself, Commissioner Greata, Mark Brochu, um, Dave Struck, we're going to go, uh, down to Algenack, we've had some recent meetings with the city of Algenack, uh, insisting them on a couple things. Uh, they're really starting to get engaged and, and, you know, looking for some assistance, there's a canoe kayak launch project that they're looking to do down there. Um, a boardwalk restoration, um, that the, our lobbying firm assisted the city of St. Clair in obtaining a grant for that. And, um, they'd like to look at a possible planning session coming up, so we're gonna be at their meeting on the eighteenth down there to assist them with a couple things and stuff, so, Bill, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that.
Nope, I think you pretty much covered it, Jeff, they, uh, they do not have, they have not had a seat at the table in a long time and I think it's just because they either didn't want to come up or get involved, um, for whatever reason. But with, uh, a few new people on the council now, all of a sudden, there's some interest and they wanna, they wanna share in this thing. They finally realized, I guess, they're not this silo that they may have been at one time, and so they wanna, they wanna get involved in it. I believe they're, have a motion coming up on the board, they're, they're talking about joining the DDA, one of the, maybe the only city other than, I think maybe K-Pac, but that's, that's more McCombe, yeah, what did I say, DDA?
DDA.
Yeah, they want to join the EDA, uh, so they're gonna do that, there's some other things that they're getting involved in. Uh, they have taken, uh, an interest in several other things in the county and they're not dumping on their administration, but rather the council members themselves are going to get involved, similar to what we do here at the county where, uh, Dave goes over to, I'm sorry, Commissioner Rushing goes over to, uh, the road commission meetings, Commissioner McConnell goes to central dispatch, we all go to different meetings and stuff. And I believe Algenack is going to start patterning some of that stuff after what we do here. So it's, uh, I think it's kind of like a coming up party almost, it's, uh, I think it's gonna help them tremendously. And I appreciate the support of Commissioner Bone and Carrie's been at some of these meetings and, uh, the rest of the people that are, that have been at some of these meetings, we've had three or four already, um, and so, truly appreciate that help.
Any other comments? Alright, we'll move on to nine, information only, we have none, can I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion passed, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You stand adjourned.